To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right, can you get a motion to approve the agenda?
I approve the agenda.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Prove the minutes from ten sixteen seventeen.
I make the motion to approve the minutes as written from ten sixteen seventeen.
Second that.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. All righty, we'll move on. Kayden? Would you come up? Kayla Green with Crisis Intervention Services.
Hi, how are you doing this evening?
Good.
Sorry, I got a cold in.
Sorry. You can sit.
You can stand, whatever you feel comfortable doing.
I'll stand, sorry. I'm Kayla Green, I'm a domestic violence advocate with Crisis Intervention Services. This month is domestic violence awareness month, so we go around to the county where we serve and have you guys sign a proclamation, so they just kind of give a little bit of details and answer any questions that you guys have, so. If you don't mind, I'll read a little bit of facts on this proclamation if that's okay. Two hundred and ninety-one adults and children have been killed in the state of Iowa as a result of domestic violence since nineteen ninety-five. In Humble County, actually, one hundred and sixty-eight survivors in the last year have sought out services for, in our agency. Children who grew up in violent homes are abused and know it's at a higher rate than the national average. Domestic violence cost a nation over five billion annually in medical expenses, law enforcement, court costs, shelters, and foster care, sick leave, and vacancies, and reduced worker productivity. So those are just a little bit of facts. My job pretty much just entails that I, you know, client calls, it's kind of what they are to, or what they need, so if I have to do two thirty-six with a more protective order, I'll do that. I'll go to court with them. I'll do law enforcement, sorry. I'll do law enforcement interviews with them. We get a lot of referrals from law enforcement, clear of court, DHS, any, we do a lot of outreach, we get our name out there, so that way, if they do have a domestic violence victim or something, they can call us. We also do have a social assault advocate too, in our three counties that we cover, with this, and our two others. So that's kind of the basis of my job. Do you guys have any questions?
You do have three counties, right?
Yes, I have three counties.
Is that similar operation? We hear a lot of PR about the one over two center. Is that similar operation?
Sorry, say that again?
One, a big concern, a big operation over two center, they brag about their domestic abuse thing, you ever heard of?
I'm not familiar with two center.
But you've basically worked about three counties?
Yeah, so our agency currently covers fifteen counties, so our main office is up in the main of the city, and then I cover Wright, Hamilton, Humble. We do have offices down in Portage, we kind of work with shelters as well. We're the outreach portion, they're just the shelter, so, you know, we coordinate with them, if clients need shelter, all that, so.
So we have literature, is there literature in one of the offices that someone, if they need your services, they can get ahold of you, how do they go about doing that?
I do, I leave my cards, and we leave brochures and everything.
Good.
So we typically go around maybe once a month, or a couple, um, sometimes every other month, or something like that, try.
And I think there might be things out on the bulletin board.
That's another one.
Yep, yep.
Down at the sheriff's office and things like that, it's good.
Yep, so we do a lot of outreach, like here, police department, everywhere, so.
So being horses from all the speeches you've been doing?
No, I've actually been, pretty much, the last three months locked over, so, I don't know, it's my shirt.
How is Humble County's numbers trending? Are they pretty even, are they going down, are they going up?
If I remember correctly, I think they're actually going up from last year. But that doesn't necessarily mean it needs, it happens more here, I think it's just, we have a good team out here, you know, like the law enforcement's pretty great, everybody's pretty great about letting us know their, you know, in case anybody needs help, so, I think it's just.
Sometimes some of them are reported and sometimes they aren't, so that, if they aren't reported, then they aren't considered a, it didn't happen.
Yeah.
And that's the part.
If they don't want to.
And I just know, working with some of the groups, that a lot of times they don't want to.
I mean, they're just aware, more service is out, so.
I'd make a motion to, for Rick to sign the proclamation.
Second that.
Second by first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Kayden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have you sign too, this one for our file, and that will be yours.
That would be great.
Or the other way around. It works that way.
Can you copy that? Is that good?
Yeah, just so I have one that has.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, moving on. Let's go down, let's Paul here.
I just named Dave, well, my other Paul was in front of me.
All right, let's do claims anyway, being as we've been, we've been getting started on.
I reviewed the claims, Mr. Chairman, it looks like a hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, ninety-four cents for general, thirty-six thousand and four twenty-six point sixty-eight for drainage, I move approval.
First and second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Come on, there we are.
Brought Dave Paul in for the first order of agenda, is approval of driveway widening for Tyler Smith in Rutland Section Three and Rutland Section Eleven. From what it, Little I reviewed it, it looks like too many driveways per policy. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I think he gave you colored photos of what, what's left, that's probably about these, he's what, right there? Current, existing, and both. And I think if there is a.
Went for a quarter mile, you know?
He's got three quarters of a mile front, if I remember correctly, and he wants four drivers, he has four driveways, drivers.
What are the widths of the current? Are the, what's the width of the current ones that he has in there? Are they just standard?
Yeah, yep. All the widths are fine.
The widths aren't the issue, it's how many. I mean, he can widen, you can widen any existing driveway up to fifty with permit, and then fifty to a hundred with board approval.
Well, I have that new drive, but he doesn't have a driveway in his parcel there. He would be extending them to Dial Erickson's, and then on the other one, he'd be extending on to Dave Farnark's.
Oh, the one at the fence line there?
Yep.
He's more or less trying to get them on all four corners, and then he's got one in the middle, in both of them.
Probably got anxious, because he really signed out there too, he needs something.
The one miller, he's separate parcel, if I understand correctly.
Yes.
Well, if you have a policy, you have to follow it, you pretty much have to. You know it unless you make an exception.
My first question to him is, why doesn't he remove the one in the middle? That's the, there's one in the middle of the farm, you know, you, everybody wants them on the corners.
Did you mention that to him?
And the answer is?
He didn't want to yet.
If I may.
I was gonna say, he's sitting there asking.
Oh, they're dark now. So, I mean, we can, right, call these new driveways all you want, but these are all extensions on to existing driveways. The only difference is, some of them are on my side of the property line. You know, so Humble County and Rutland Township are gonna have the same number of driveways after this request as they did before this request. They're just gonna be slightly bigger. So if that's a breach of policy, then we're already in breach of policy, because all those driveways are already out there.
So both of these requests are just to widen existing driveway?
Correct. There are no new independent driveways, these are all extensions. But they're the neighbors' driveways, are they?
I see.
They're the, so, this would be for?
The neighbors have the drive, you want to extend it?
Correct.
So they'll be sharing the driveway?
Correct. So one neighbor allows me to pull over into his property and use his driveway.
Right.
Another neighbor has a fence line up to the corner, and I don't use his driveway because I can't. So I'm indebted to the one neighbor, because I'm using his driveway, and the other driveway I can't use because I can't get to it. So if I'm willing to pay for them, and we can have a shared driveway, there's gonna be the same number of driveways as there was before, they'll just be bigger.
And so it says here, property owner's permission, that would be the neighbors?
Correct.
Think you have, where is that?
Each got them.
Those are all, they both called them, so they.
So they got them, so we're just adding, just adding the ones, adding width to the ones that's there?
These are all just extensions. So it's okay with the neighbors? Neighbors are good? That, no. We require that, I mean, it gives it a property line.
Obviously, it makes sense, because it's not, yeah, they gotta sign off. I don't see any problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, this, this.
I don't see any problem with it.
These are the areas where Paul has to be black and white, because he has to follow policy, it's our job to work the gray areas, and this is kind of one of the gray things, so.
So I would ask that, you know, these extensions be approved. If there are driveways that need to come out, we can talk about that, but it's the same number of driveways tomorrow as it was yesterday.
Yeah, and what was brought up in one of your fields here, Tyler, the middle of the field, where this gives you better access, obviously. Contemplation on that?
You know, it's just one of those things where, like I said, if we were adding driveways, if there was a new number of driveways, I'd be on board with that, but since it's the same number of driveways, I guess I'd like to leave it now.
Yeah?
Go ahead.
Oh, do you use it much? I mean?
So I just took over the lease on these farms last year.
Okay.
We're still kind of getting familiar with how we like to, you know, the operations of the farm to flow. We haven't used it much yet, but some of those driveways are up on the high ground, and we have a wet year, that driveway might be pretty valuable.
So are you doing these, or the, you requested the county do it, so then we don't have to worry that it?
Yeah, it gets done right, I'll just, once Dave, once Dave gives me the estimate on what he wants to do it for pipe and dirt and pollen, he can put it on the list of stuff to do, if he has the estimates, I'll write them down. If it gets done this fall, that's great, if it doesn't get done till spring, that's great. I mean, we can be respectful of the county and their workload and what they have to get done.
I got a question for you, Dave. Now, when you put this extension on, of course, the new side will have the correct slope, you're gonna correct the slope of the opposite side of this driveway, or could? Okay.
Any driveway has to be brought up, once it's worked on.
All right. Means you're just doing one side, I didn't know if you're gonna do the other side at the same time?
That's part of, why we have to contact the owner of the driveway on the side, and see if.
I'd make a motion, we approve the driveway widening for Tyler in Section Three and Section Eleven, as requested.
Yeah, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second is approved construction on county right away for Midland Power Co-op to install underground primary electric lines at fourteen seventy-five Birch Avenue. It appears here that they're taking overhead to underground beside the acreage and within the acreage, so I'm trying to get rid of all that on it. We have added a note on it to put it in the outer eighteen inches of right away, and a minimum of four foot depth, which it's gonna be bored anyway, so they won't have any problem with that.
All right.
I don't, see, I, I recommend it's approval, if you're waiting for that.
No, I mean, I was just reading.
Yeah, I just looked at it, and it, there's no, it's just, like you said, it's bored anyway. I'll make a motion to approve the construction on the right away for Midland Power.
Have a first?
Second.
Second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
By the way, we need signatures on that, if you don't, Dave. We'll, we'll start stacking signatures.
Next one is approved voucher number two to Peterson, contractors for work completed on project LC one nine two three five nine.
This is Ryan Beck Peterson, right?
Yes.
Oh, we got one Peterson's digging over there?
Yes, this is PCI.
Okay.
Lot of Petersons around, ain't there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Uh, this is. This is the final point of this, for both of these projects, except for retainage. In this case, it was to complete the backfilling on it, we paid a good share of it with voucher number one. Both of these vouchers are reflect the project completed.
Well, on the, the one out on the lanes, their country, their supervisor, or foreman came over and talked to Tyler and Larry about, evidently they had some pretty good sized chunks of that bridge, and worked a deal out with them about burying some back in their timber, so they were very happy to accommodate them, because they took care of some stuff for them, so they continue to be a good working contractor.
Right, and we intended to make sure they're happy with whatever they agreed to. Normally, we have something writing on that, that we're done and we're fine, because sometimes, anything off-site, buried off-site privately, we like to have a, the county's not responsible, some kind of letter.
Something in the file.
Yep, and we check with the subfinal before we pay retainage, to make sure that those kind of issues are.
Tyler just said they were very easy to work with, and they appreciated it very much, they got in, hustled through it, did a good job, and it looks very nice to.
No, their share of it's done, we're starting some additional work this afternoon, or this morning, once we get the rest of the equipment over, pulling all the old wooden delineators out, we're gonna take the gutter section that's developed over the last sixty years out, regrade a little bit of the road, or pull it in, and I'll put regular steel post delineators in, and get more room, in other words, that you could go through there with the thirty-foot flat, I mean, with the combine now, once we're done.
Yeah. They're gonna try to get it seeded this fall, then?
We got a lot of things to seed here yet, and with the rain we had, that's good for these two projects, is to get a rain on it before we seed it, we're gonna try to seed and see what happens.
I make a motion to approve voucher number two to Peterson, Inc., for LC one nine two three five nine.
I take it. All right, I have a first and a second.
Unless you want to, we can lump them both together, if you want to do that, or if you want to.
They're different people.
That's for eight, nineteen thousand, eighty-nine dollars and eleven cents?
Yep. Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second one is to Wyman Eight, it's approval of voucher number two to Wyman Eight, for work completed on LC eighteen thirty-two eighty, this is down on two seventieth Street in the south end of Beaver. This reflects the project complete in place, except for retainage, so, so this means for eight, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents. And that has, that remains to be seeded also.
I'll make a motion to approve. Voucher number two, project number LC one eight three two eight oh, for eight thousand forty, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second Dave's motion, have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Finally, is approved quote to purchase wireless tablets and single, signal boosters. We've been researching some wireless tablets, for each main shop, for such things as current workload would be electronic work requests, or an electronic folder for all kinds of anything submitted to us, would then go electronically to, be reviewed by the foreman. With that, would be Sign Tool, we can get electronic version of the Sign Tool through the Service Bureau, we are currently using, what's the sign program we have, Dave, I'm drawing a blank, Simple Signs. They'll transform and transfer all the data we have from Simple Signs onto the Service Bureau's Sign App program, and these notebooks would be easily used for that. We did debug it, since you saw the original numbers, we had US Cellular come to the shops, the shops, inside the shops have a poor signal, even for data. Your cell phone won't work inside the shop, but the data would be transmitted, although poorly, but we would recommend putting signal boosters on each shop at three hundred, they're about three hundred and eighty dollars apiece, and eventually, each of these tablets would have its own email account through Gold Hill Access at five bucks apiece a month, so that'd be another fifteen dollars a month for it. And I, I think that's the best we can do at this point, as the bottom line says, purchase US Cellulars, four tablets, and two or three signal boosters. I think we should get one for our main, main office, it would boost everybody's cell phone, and it would make the wireless work better.
Question on the sign thing you mentioned?
Sign inventory.
Sign inventory? So you have a program for that now?
Right.
It's sign inventory, so does that mean you know how many signs you have on hand? Or it's what signs you need to be thinking about replacing?
This is the sign inventory of everything in place.
In place?
We have, this is the electronic form of that, this app, or this is a computer program developed with the Service Bureau, would take that to another step forward. With this tablet, you could drive the tablet and review the signs, and they pop up as, on the tablet as you drove by.
But you do have a.
We do have.
You do have something in place, it, so basically keeps track of.
Right, we can, whatever how many engineer-grade stop signs we have that are in poor, poor shape.
You do have that now?
That's how we came up with last February, when we did Stop Aheads, and we ordered three hundred Stop Aheads out of this six hundred and eighty, sort of, seven hundred units in the county, and that's just to try to keep track, and right now, it's manually entered, anybody that does a repair on one of those has a card they fill out, and it's a Ben or Dave, and then we update it on the computer. With this system, the foreman, or whoever's out there repairing the sign, fixes it, enters the date he fixed it, what he fixed, the data on it, it's on, boom, then, then it's accessible to everybody in the office, or whatever.
So walk me through this, is this, these tablets, and I'm just gonna use the county K road that we just did over here, is that gonna have all the information in front of him, that A, he knows all of the locates have been done, B, the, the, this is what our intentions are, so that they all are on the same page, and we don't?
It comes in as a work request, the work request goes out, if it's an obvious work, turns into an obvious work order, the foreman would then mark it, yep, needs, or take pictures, it's recorded, when he takes the pictures, it won't log the coordinates right now for the, for the locates, it won't automatically locate, they're working on that through the, the, not nine one one, it's eight one one, for to get it, so it's automatic, but we are on a test run through the Wright Counties, test run the counties.
Isn't that the one you were working with?
One of the counties is just running it right now, and they have to go through so many iterations without any glitches before they'll let them have full access, but eventually, all that'll be done, if it's a work order, it'll show up when the foreman picks it up, when it's cleared, by that number, and they can log in the time, anything that's done with this system, anything that's done out there needs a work order. So if the foreman sees something on their own that needs to be done, they can develop a work order, but the point is, everything's logged to a work order and tracked.
So where you bill it?
So we can bill it, or we at least know when it first came in, what was done, what was, the photos are all stored to it, the explanations. Work requests that come through, that the foreman says, oh, this is same request, we've had this in my tenure four times to try to do this, the problems with it, blah, 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 it's all recorded then in one spot. And then it comes back as to, or the, the request, or the request, was it, there's a place where you check a date and a time, where you can say that you called whoever requested it, and said, we're not doing the work, for instance.
You can record.
I was gonna say.
It's a tracking tool.
Yeah, very well.
You having that much issue keeping track of things, at this point in time? I mean?
It's not, it's not as formally structured. I can't tell you, I can tell you when the stuff comes through our office, I have a note on most everything that comes through, and in a file. Finding it, if it was four years ago, might be a different issue, but this would be interesting, and, and it makes a lot of sense for those recurring issues, that you pull it up now, or that came through last summer, four years from now, you pull up the same, same spot, it's still there. It's all the data, and instead of going back to what we have, we have systems of trying to make sure that we have everything addressed one way or another, if it's something that's a work order, or something that has to be done, it should be on a board in every one of the main shops. That was the system that we started maybe ten years ago, is when in doubt, look at the board, I mean, if you want something to do, or you don't know what you need to do, and then they keep score as to where they're at by having everything hit the board. It, it, it works better for us now, if it all comes through our office, instead of directly to a foreman, or to a patrolman, or to someone that's south along the road, to say, fix my widget, because on the fix my widgets, it might not ever get to anybody that knows what widget is broken, so.
And that person comes back five years ago and says, I reported that, and yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nobody did any of it. And, and we can't confirm.
I'm not gonna say that this is gonna completely eliminate that issue either.
It, it will, if it doesn't ever make the work order, and the only thing is, that somebody, if they want to make sure it gets to a work request, I should say it that way, if it gets to a work request, whoever's requesting it, needs to make sure it gets to our office. Either Sue, or, or someone in our office, and can go that route, or, or at least call us, you can explain the details to the foreman. Point is, the, the average truck driver, laborer in there is instructed to point those people to our office in the first place, but some, some do and some don't.
The other question is, when you read through all of it, where are we at with the total cost on all this stuff?
And that's why, and it is confusing, and that's what wireless tablets, four units, the first year is fifteen hundred dollars, second year and third year would be fourteen hundred dollars. The signal boosters are a one-time cost of three hundred and eighty dollars apiece, and then the only other thing above the fourteen hundred and one dollar cost would be five dollars per each tablet for an email address. In other words, at some point, Wright County, right now, the, the eight one warrant is emailing directly to the request, or it shows right up on the tablet, through email, not that the, all the things are cleared, or whatever, on the, on the underground locates, and that's why we need locates. Otherwise, the other things we thought of for, for the email for this, is instead of having the notices copied, thrown in the tray in the office, we'd send the notices out, Sue would send the notices out via email to each foreman, I mean, it would be in her office, things that aren't tied to either sign or work orders, but anything else that needed to be in there, all of the data we get back from oil samples, or whatever, instead of copying it, alls we do is forward it to the email for the foreman in the shop.
So what, what's Wright County's feedback as far as workability? Because we've got guys that are older, are they gonna, is it something they're gonna be able to use, or something they're gonna throw in the dash and just say, no, let's just go back to the paper, because that's.
I don't understand how to use it.
You mean, someone like me, so?
Well, no, someone like me. You know, I mean, my phone has got more than I do.
Well, first of all, it's your own man, but it, it is streamlining, and they have some mixed reactions, but one comment's from one guy that's trying to do this on paper, it's easier. I mean, they're using the tablets, eventually, I believe Hamilton County has gone the step further with the ABLs, and they're using their time sheets and whatever, it's all electronic submissions for time sheets. I mean, you can, this is just the base.
Just basically touching the tip of it.
Right, yeah, this is, ABLs is another issue that we beat around the bush for four or five years around here, and haven't pulled the plug, because it used to be a fifteen to eighteen thousand dollar item a year, now you can see, the ABL for twenty-eight units is seventy-five hundred, and then for the first year, and forty-five hundred second. Those were all just on there for information, I mean, it boils down, the US Cellular has the best coverage in the US, the best price, we would sign a contract to them that they can't, and that we don't have, that we could pull out anytime at some point if we wanted to, but.
Well, if you don't, do the boosters, there's, we all know the locations around the county that it's so poor, you aren't gonna.
Well, the boosters are mainly for the shops.
Right, but you still have to be able to.
And for them to be able to sit in and do some of this computer work right in their offices, key, I think, to even look at, to see what came in, an email, or what work orders or requests came in, without having to go sit in the pickup outside the building to do it.
I mean, with these phones, then you'll actually know where everybody's at at all times.
Well, we're not touching the phones.
No, no, it's only, you're told, you're.
We're just putting tablets.
Rough figures?
Uh, the tablets, no, no, wireless tablets.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, uh, the.
Is that total for all four?
Yes, for four units, wireless tablets, four units, fifteen hundred and fifty-one dollars.
I'm assuming that that's all out of his budget anyway, isn't it?
Well, we could negotiate.
Well, nobody else's, but no.
No, it's up, it's up there, it's only.
Would every complaint, God up here had a complaint or Joe over here had a complaint, would that be logged in there? Every complaint that comes in here?
It comes through as a request, a work request, the county needs to do something or, or whatever. Some of the, some of the complaints aren't tied to requests. I mean, if it is tied to the county needs to do something, it shows up as a work request. It's investigated by whoever gets, if we get there before the foreman does, we can clear it and tell the foreman that it's a work request that's denied and then we can have a, a date where we contacted the people that made the request to say that it was denied and why.
Yeah, we can probably shoot a photo before and after and all that stuff and it's all.
It's a great tracking tool.
Yeah.
And it will be, it'll be some pain and groans on the, getting developed. Even the electronic version of the annual report or the budget at first was a pain, but it, to change any one thing in it is so easy as opposed to what we used to do. If there's a growth curve in there and I think some of these guys will do better than they think because there is, it's all drop down screens you pick.
It tracks all complaints, like I've been saying from the long time now, we need a paper trail. Everything complaints, he comes in to complain, whoever he is, it needs logged. If this will track that, I'll go.
I don't.
And, and we do have a paper trail on every complaint because I have a complaint file that we keep. But I can't tell you how many times it's happened, the same, you know, and repeated complaint. I can go back through and look chronologically in the file and know that I received that complaint to find it. And, and I don't know if it will fix that. This is not, if that complaint was tied to my intake is plugged, then it's a work request. Then absolutely it would track it. But if it was.
Mine gets cleaned out.
Well, well, that's a work request. Something, anything that's tied to work requests. But if the sky is blue and they're complaining the sky is blue, there's nothing that we're gonna do with the sky is blue. That's the ones that it would not address.
Well, I mean, you still are doing the same thing. This is a, technology is great, you know, it's another version of keeping track, but you still have to keep track. I mean, if you have a, a piece of paper, a computer or an iPad, if you don't log it, if you don't either write it down, put it in a computer program, put it on the system, it's a moot point anyway. And I see back to Bruce's comment, possibly some issues with it. It shouldn't be that difficult. Technology doesn't always work that good. Yeah, the thought of the boosting the signal, because we're all familiar with bad cell signals, you're relying on cell signal. I don't know. I mean, yeah, it sounds all well and good, is it gonna remedy anything? I don't know. I think it's just spending some extra money to do what we should be doing and keeping track after the beginning.
How long would it?
I don't think yield monitors do any good either or field mapping. Maybe I just hear that. I think technology is good. I think we need to step into it and embrace it.
And all they've done is through the growing pains and I'll guarantee you have cut the yield monitor.
They fight it, they fight it and once you get it working, it's great.
How long does it take for, from the start to put all this together? Is it like a month or you doing?
What we're, what I would intend to do is to get this up and running and go through rudimentary things here, fall, winter. I mean, we're, we're maybe log some of the carryover stuff and put it in to work through it. Let everybody play with it and then we'll have Service Bureau come up and train everybody that uses it. They'll come up to us and train us on it.
So you're leasing the tablets through your cellular?
Yeah. No, we're buying, we're buying up with the tablets and signed a contract for two year or three year. I don't know what it is.
So you're at that, as listed, 1,551 first year and that's for four, that's what you need.
It's 37, the initial cost per tablet is 3,750.
For four of them, that's 150 bucks. And then you had mentioned the 380 boosters, instead of two, probably three?
Yep, I would put one here, I think. But we have, we're looking at trying to do, we had where you could get access in our office, Dave, and then it had trouble with solutions and we pulled it out, so.
Well, that makes sense. And this comes out of the secondary rules budget.
Yes.
We don't have any extra money.
I think your employees will come around, it's no different than we had.
It'll be a cost-saving device.
Some of the old teachers says, I can't do that, I'll never learn, well, they learned it and your employees will learn it.
And some of the, yeah. It would surprise you on any of the technology and who picks it up and who uses it with these and who doesn't pick it up and use it with these. It's hard to predict.
And they're not gonna have a lot of them.
Aren't the programs through the Service Bureau, are they?
Right, and they're obtaining, the beauty of it is.
Dave, if you're signing thing, that's, that doesn't cost any extra.
That will not cost anymore.
And that would save a ton of time.
Yeah.
Well, it's all good stuff and if we see an improvement in keeping track and getting things done, it's money well spent. That's the bottom line.
I think we asked Paul to look at this and he brought it to us.
I moved, we approved their quote purchase of wireless tablets and signal boosters as presented.
I have a first.
Oh, second, and you're gonna, you wanna put the three as opposed to two signal boosters then? Is that what you request?
Recommend that so it works better?
Well, unless we can get it in our current.
Well, Dave standing on the roof with the satellite dish probably won't cut it in the winter.
No, but the same problem you have in here with coming and trying to get on Peggy's machine with wireless is the same problem we have out there because we don't want anybody on solutions. And that's where we had it at one time and got rid of it because our virus antivirus kept clicking it out. And so we just got rid of the wireless system out there and then we're all hardwired.
Well.
This needs to be wireless and we're gonna play with that yet. That's the only question that remains.
Any more discussion on this topic?
I think it's a good step forward. The whole question I have, you think that five gig, is that per unit? For data or is that total for units?
Uh, that was more than they expected us to use because that's where Wright County is with their whole system. I think this is parallel what they're using and that was not an issue for them. Again, this is just data. Right. And if somebody starts streaming, and we can block the other things, the questions, we can block movie drops or whatever so that that can't happen. This stuff Dave wants to use.
All righty, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'm leaving you all the signature stuff, including some from last year, last week. I tell you the ones where you missed and she needs all of them.
All right.
All right? Very good, thank you, Dylan.
Thank you. Are you headed for drainage?
Yeah.
I just noticed Peggy put her sign, her name down. She must be leaving it.
She is.
I'll make a motion to go into drainage.
All right. First and second, we are in drainage. All in favor?
Aye. Why am I getting breaking off?
No, I'm not. For the expense, it's not coming out of the county budget.
What's the best part? As long as it's out of his budget, he's, they're gonna push and make sure that they're following uses and learn how to use it.
Well, I hope so. If they is, that's the thing, yeah.
If it's an improvement.
Shouldn't make it any worse.
Some of the older guys, you're gonna have the issues of, well, I'm not.
I don't learn it, how do I run this? What do I do? Doesn't work.
Yeah, I have to get with the program.
You might have to go train them.
My kids don't think they can, but I can. Anybody want coffee while we're sitting here? I'm sure. Nobody got, call, call, you, call.
I'm good, yeah, I had one. Well. I know there's a, there's been something on, page 11 sub 5. There's one question Gary knew that. I see on this 11 sub 5, Gary has a couple of questions on that, so.
Okay, we're in drainage. Uh, we have a DD 11 sub 5 reclassification hearing. Okay, the sub 5 of 11 has never had the open ditch part separated from the main tile improvements. Basically what that creates is a situation where at these reports, there's been no way to have just the people that will get improvement to be eligible for remonstrance. The tile projects that you've been considering will not improve the ditch capacity. It will strictly improve the tile. So what I'm gonna give you is the main tile, reclass, and then I'll give you one for the main also. Now, keep in mind, this is not taken into account improvement because we don't know if that's gonna happen.
This is the current.
This is current. What this reclass does, two things, it will get the tile separated so that as the hearings continue on the possible improvements, just the people on the tile are the ones that would be involved in remonstrance. Now, it seems crazy, but if the tile project goes forward, we have to do a new reclassification again. Now, because this is based on current conditions because that's what we have to face, deal with right now. Now, it would cost less than a dollar an acre to do it again.
Yeah, because it's basically just computer work.
Yes, it's computer work. The things that we'd look at is like the, the potholes will probably go up some. People right at the outlet may go down a little. And we just quickly review everything with commissions. So it wouldn't take a lot.
And you say current condition, like as it?
As of today.
As it sits out there right now?
Right now, yes, with no tile improvement projects.
That, does that, these costs reflected in current conditions?
This, the cost I put in.
Yeah, that, we had a discussion this world back, but yeah, tell, tell us about the cost as for listed here.
Okay. The. The cost, yeah, okay. I put in the possible cost for the improvement, just to give people a better idea on what their assessment would be if it's. This is not final for improvements, but people wanted a better idea.
This is more like an estimate.
What it is estimating improvement.
Right, right, so.
That's these numbers, right?
Yes, yes.
So is this much different from the last copy though? Didn't we get this earlier?
No, it should be, I think, the same as she got before, fairly recently.
Well, that's what I thought. The number had not seen different.
It looks about the same to the last.
Yeah, yeah.
So question and, that answers that question. The other one is, it isn't, you mentioned the other reclassification of all of their listed columns. What would potentially change in the, you know, if the project went through and you needed the reclassification? What of these would change?
Okay.
Or could change, potentially change?
Any of them could change?
So area?
No, the areas stay the same, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying.
The, I'm just looking at this.
Parcel number, landowner, section, fraction, area benefited, those would all stay the same. Basically, the right half of the sheet would change, depending on the commissioner's feelings.
Total assessment?
Yeah, average benefit would change, percent of the total units. Units would change on some of these parcels where.
Area would not.
Right.
Average benefit could, percentage of total could and obviously total uni, total assessment, units amount could.
Yes, yes, yep, correct.
Okay.
The, the, the one I just gave you for the open ditch includes all, everything drained by the open ditch. Anything with any shading at all is what is paying for, towards this. And then explain just briefly what this drawing was used for. We did this reclassification, how we've been doing them now, with soils having a very large factor in the units or the benefit assigned. And the reason for that is that they indicate so much about the soil and how much the improvement will do some good for them. The slope, crops stability, whether it's underling with sand. Some of these soils in the soil survey book even says, good for row crop if drained. Prime candidate for a fairly high number. One thing that's changed in recent years working with commissioners here in Humboldt County is the clarion soils usually have, they're hillside basically, have some slope. Few years ago, with the help of commissioners here, we actually increased the points per acre on the clarions a little bit. We had them very, very low for quite a few years. With all the pattern tiling being done, side hills, a lot of them are tiled now. So there's more benefit there than there used to be. So that, that increased somewhat. What you have is the end result of what we've done and I'll emphasize, the main thing here is to get the tile separated from the open ditch. This is, this project is very confusing because of the options you're considering and being required to study. And the final project that happens for an improvement will affect who is assessed more or who is assessed less. Have been objections, but it's, the objections are mostly a form letter that objects to the project slash reclass. So I don't know if they have specific problems with the reclass or not.
Is this all objection?
You know, we had, had this as a topic of discussion, but as far as the reclassification as stated, tile versus ditch, this technically, theoretically could have been done 75 years ago.
Yes, yeah, that's what we're.
This reclass, what we're doing today.
Yes.
It, there's, I mean, it could have been, maybe should have been done a number, number of years ago.
Yeah, it's mostly been happening in the last 10 years.
Granted, the things have changed over time, we all know, but.
Yeah.
So this isn't something that.
No, this is not a new procedure.
And maybe if, but things were quite a bit different 50, 70 years ago as far as drainage than they are today. But this could have easily been done many, many years ago. This, this project that we're doing right here.
Yes, yes. This basically cleans this up so that, for example, if you're looking at the first possible improvement that we're considering, what I call the west one, the people that you see on the main tile list are the ones that have the right for remonstrance. And this gets it so that the ditch people who are not paying anything actually wouldn't, wouldn't be involved in the remonstrance because they're, they're not paying anything. So, no benefit. It corrects that so that as we go forward here, we're using the right landowners to consider the remonstrance.
Any comments on the public?
Okay. Go on.
I don't know anything about this. And I sat in here last week and all of a sudden it dawned on me, this ditch, DD 11, sub 5, goes a mile along our farm. It's water. I personally think that DD 11 ditch, there's obstruction someplace. That thing gets so full of water and you guys that live around there, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, it stays level pool when you get real hard rains for two or three days. And this farm that I'm referring to, the tile, actually the water comes back up into the field through the tile. And it also comes through the pipe that goes through the bank, it comes back through them. Now, you just mentioned that you didn't think the monitors were.
No, that was, that was a comment. I said, if technology is, I just wanna show you, get used to it. This is the farm.
This is the farm. This is a half section. This is DD eleven. This is five sub, there's forty-five acres drowned out. Now, when you got a ditch that big, you wouldn't think anything would drown out. I can go back and show you pictures of other years. There's another picture of it drowned out. And also fix these areas, that's all tile. But that tile, it just doesn't work until the water goes down. And I'm just thinking that maybe you got a problem in this DD eleven. I just think that thing is, I don't know, you local guys know anything that could be obstructing the water? Why it's so overloaded?
I think part of it is east of the highway at Meanders, it's, it's not part of the district, that perhaps it's backing up that far. Just looks like that would be a prime candidate where you can improve downstream if you just buy the right of way. So, that would be something that could be looked at pretty easily to see if that's, if that's part of the problem. But there could be some blockage.
You just think you need to fly it with a drone?
That, and we could do that, one of these first trips we're down here. That's a good idea here.
Any of you local guys monitor anything, you think there's a problem or not?
And I mean, is the, is this been an ongoing issue? Or is it something that's always been that way, or, I mean?
We've farmed that for five or six years. Well, we've lost fifty acres. And here, you're right next to that big ditch, you're losing.
We've got a, for, come on a discussion on this, and I did visit with Gary about his concern once he realized that the ditch was next to the farm ground that he farmed. But I talked to a lot of these other landowners that also farmed next to it, very familiar with the ditch. There's been no concern, and this, I don't know what portion of that ditch in recent history was, was cleaned out.
A lot of it was spot cleaned.
Was it spot, okay.
It was not whole.
It wasn't an entire clean out?
People gave me a bad time because they, we usually push for repairs or improvements. This one had very little problem other than spot cleanouts, if it would be necessary. That came several years ago now.
Then that was, so, yes, it has, it wasn't, it wasn't yesterday, and it wasn't a complete length of ditch cleanup.
Right, right.
So, potentially, there's a, there's a issue with needing some more spot cleanup.
This, and I'm glad you mentioned drone because drone would be a good thing to do going downstream too, see what's happening downstream.
Oh, I just think there's something downstream, I don't.
Yeah.
But when you got, well, we had water in the intake, and we thought, what's that pulling out? We thought we had a tile problem. Well, we made, we surveyed the water in the intake to the sub five in the same level. And if somebody looked at that twenty-two inch tile that dumped into that sub five and looked at the outlet, and it cleaned, does that tile work properly?
We haven't looked at it for quite a while.
It's just like, I looked at a tile that drains thousands of acres over the last, and it's half sealed. Oh, that one, that you looked at Bruce, and they cleaned out. We couldn't figure out why the drains were starting to slow down. We dug on the ground, it's like a pine horn style, and it's half full. So, that go up with grass and trees on hand.
Well, we're finding it, we can probably get a pretty good look at it even with the drone, but wouldn't hurt to get out there.
Just to walk out there?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, it's not my department, but I'm just saying, I just decided all of a sudden.
So, the check out.
Let's get back to reclassification.
Yeah.
I guess that it opened for public and looking for a motion.
I got one other quick question on the ditch breakdown. So, the amount, I go back to your original statement, as of today, where total assessment amount on the ditch?
Yeah, that's where we just, that's basically just for the cost of the reclassification because.
Okay.
They're not, yeah.
Obviously, there's no, at this point anyway, potential project, there's nothing to plug in.
Right, right.
A lot, Trish did that in the one that she sent out, though.
Oh, okay.
Just to, just, just like Rick did, putting in a potential project just to so you see numbers.
Yeah.
This, there's no, there's no estimate, this is as.
Right, it's just to give them an idea that.
There was some confusion on that when people actually read their mail.
Sure, because I think you put like ten thousand in or something, or what, I don't remember.
I said a hundred.
A hundred, but it was just.
For number to go by.
Oh, okay, and of course, I had to figure that out, but this, this is no, no estimate. This would be actually probably their cost for the reclassification. Because there's nothing else, or it's pending.
Right.
Too odd these things out there.
Right, right.
But it still gives you a, like, the same agent, it gives you an amount to look at.
Right, and it works good with the commissioners to kind of compare one to another by having dollars in there.
Right. Is there any other further discussion?
I don't believe so. We just need a motion to accept the reclassification report.
Make a motion to accept the reclassification report for DD number eleven sub five.
Second?
Okay, we have a first and a second, any more discussion? Paul and Trevor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Keep in mind, yes, the project goes forward, you'll all be getting those in hearings before that. We'll want to get input, anything you have for tile or whatever to help us look at that reclassification yet.
Can you make sure Gary gets his information back?
And I emailed you that, right?
Yep. I have a business about that. Do you want to make that on off now? All right. Now, correct me if I got, make sure I got this right. We spoke with our attorney, Dave Johnson, and he said there is no legal precedent stating how one petition should be remonstrated before the other one. Is that probably what he said?
Heard, yeah, presented, whatever. He said it's in the best interest. He says, why wouldn't you have all three of them? And he recommends doing the three that were submitted, which includes.
Two now?
Who?
He says three.
Which is the third, which is the third one?
The half inch, the one inch, and the east.
We denied that one.
Hmm?
We denied that one.
And he, yeah, he wanted to talk to me.
Okay.
Well, the point of that is, they would be discussed and voted on at the same time.
Yep.
As far as the options of the project.
You've got it scheduled for two weeks?
Yeah, it wants to come November sixth.
So, you do it like normal, we do a half inch, and you put the one inch, and listen to the feedback that you get?
That's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong.
And then we vote on accordingly, whether they think you're getting a better bang for your buck for the one inch versus the half, right?
Yes, and that's what Dave and I review with you. Procedure, to be sure.
Bruce, I think we, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we both, I think we both got that from other projects.
Well, that's the way, I, I, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't.
No, I.
For the, I feel that I feel like.
And Rick, you were here through other projects, and.
Oh, yeah, typically.
And it was, well, the options were a half inch and an inch on a given project. And it's definitely amongst the landowners, which one they wanted to vote on, which way they wanted to go, and that's the way it went.
Yep.
So, then that puts us out to the date that we picked was, when are you doing all this so that they know?
We'll talk about that on the sixth. Well, now, here's, here's the issue. This, if following the legal advice means that you need an official report for the east option, and you haven't had a licensed engineer here for that yet.
No, not yet.
So, those guys that have to do that, get one of their licensed engineers to sign it, submit it, and then there's forty days. I know.
Is that the reason you asked last week about the license?
No, I think our attorney has a question on that. I think we need to have discussion.
Well, it's coming on November sixth.
Two weeks from today.
To be able to this.
Because I believe that, that, we want to get clear because I believe we acted in the correct manner a week ago. So that, to my knowledge, as far as a vote would be half inch, one inch, one project. But we'll clear that up with the attorney.
There you go.
Yeah.
He is.
I mean, we, we don't want to be drug into court.
No, no, and we have some, we have some information forthcoming a week from today too, that in regards to the other option we will have in front of us, I believe by next week.
Well, my only assumption, I'm hoping that we have a dry week and that we don't end up with another gully washer and then they got them jumping out of the combine because they can't, they don't want to miss a meeting for fear that they don't get to have the feedback. I want them all here to be able to voice either yea or nay, so, we're not doing it on an assumption either. That's my opinion, I'm not very smart, so.
I have a feeling before this comes to it, it's going to be, ground's going to be froze hard.
Yeah, if I was doing.
Well, aren't you for good chance?
I know.
But this isn't, this isn't moving very fast.
Just by the time you do what he's talking, and get a, the report and set forty days, and then there's still fieldwork we have to do locating that old tile before a design can be finalized.
We're in December.
We're, yeah. So, it's going to be spring.
Well, later down the path, we think we're going to.
Yes.
Proper steps, it's still a spring. What'd you forget, or what'd you want to bring up?
Nothing, I'm fine.
Okay, other things in drainage. I got, I got a question out on DD six main. I stopped by there and it looks like they're digging in a gravel pit or a sand pit.
Yes.
They're hitting a lot of the sand.
Yeah, they hit it just as they got across the road, after they crossed the road.
On the west side, it's blacked out?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wow.
Just on the north side, the gravel road.
Right next to the road.
I mean, there's, there's like three feet of black dirt, five feet of clay, and then it's a sand pit.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
So, are they going to be able to establish to keep the bottom, or is it that deep?
There, yeah, they get down to material that they can then place rock on it and have it supported.
Really, that's getting a lot of water, is the issue, I think.
They basically stopped and are letting that spot drain into the new pipe to try and get it more stable. We've been there every day just because of that condition. Yeah, and it's so frustrating to see it with Peterson, they, they're such a good contractor. We wanted it to go so smooth for them, but they're slowing away now.
Well, the good news is they stopped and they're taking care of the issue as opposed to going through it and covering it and we're gone.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I feel better that they're handling it.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, you're absolutely right. I'm going to be out there today, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, because I've driven by there a few times, I've seen they have moves, and I walked up there and took a look.
Yeah. They actually had it slide in under their trench plot all the time.
To reimbursement.
Yeah, they, they need to be safe, and they need to get enough rock under it to make it stable. And usually in Hubble County, you, you go aways with this condition, and then you get back into the raw material.
It's a small area.
Usually, yes. It's just they're making so little progress, it's taking a while to get through it.
Yeah. Okay, what do you have here for us, Trish?
Information on the reimbursement for DD two. The first column in the gray is the total of just reimbursing to the main tile. The green one on the right shows if they reimbursed according to exactly how it was levied.
Which is how was, how was expense dealt, I guess?
Correct. So, I, I, thinking of it, I think the absolute correct way is maybe to do the green.
The way it's, way it was levied. Was Trish's opinion, that's my opinion.
And we had that hundred dollar, wasn't it?
We had the hundred dollar, yeah.
At least a hundred minimum.
So, has this changed exponentially from what we looked at a week ago?
It's the same dollar amount, it's just that it's going back proportionate as to how much they pay. Which is probably mathematically the correct way to do it.
But it could, I mean, without, and I'm not going to do it, digging out the other one and comparing, it doesn't look like it changed a whole lot.
It changed just a little bit.
Well, you can see the difference between the gray one total and the green total.
That's the difference.
Okay, okay, all right, well, good, and then I'll.
And.
Yeah, I know you and I had quite a discussion on this, and so you've kind of thought through it some more.
Something went on, something went down.
And decided to, and it, you have the numbers here, so you were able to run the numbers and come up with, as Brett stated.
Taking, yeah, taking a while to do it.
Main lateral, lateral, so you've got three.
Lateral I and the lateral L, yep. And, I don't, I know Jana has a hundred dollar, my idea of it.
What is the difference between fifty to a hundred dollars?
I didn't.
Number of people.
But I, I don't know, fifty dollars to somebody.
I, I agree wholeheartedly.
And a lot, a lot of these numbers affect the city of Gilmore City.
I know. Well, do we resend a hundred dollars and change it to fifty?
I was just kind of looking through there, just trying to get a rough idea. There's one, two, three, four.
Fifty dollars is still a lot of money.
For the people that are involved possibly, yes, I know, we had a good discussion. I guess I was, you must have refunked, funk this, rethought this.
I did, I mean, I just, I didn't know that it, really that it would make that much difference. I figured it would equal, pretty balanced.
But you have the numbers here, so you have, it didn't outside of maybe a week's time to come up with these numbers, you're still good with moving forward with these refunds. It really didn't, it didn't really, you just recalculated for the main lateral I, lateral L. But I think Brett agrees, and we, I hope we all agree, that's probably correct.
And that, like I said, the purpose of it is to benefit the most people.
Right.
It really does benefit most people, more people this way.
Well, the next question, do we move it to fifty from a hundred?
Yeah, that'd be the thing, it'll probably be an extra thirty checks, the way it looks. I counted about ten on the first page, and I got far, far way down the other night, I was at twenty-six.
Granted, the research in this, the money does not leave, it stays in their district. So, you know, obviously, you know, that, we all know there's future repairs and costs and such in every district. But, I can understand Trish's concern, she's a pretty empathetic person. Moving it down to fifty, a few more people get.
Get their money back.
Their money back. And they can say, well, the guy that got five thousand, you know, why didn't I get my seventy-five?
Do you, do you think that the things that involves a, a community, there are going to be smaller numbers or a larger number that are going to have that smaller number? A farmer is probably just, you know, it's not that the fifty to a hundred dollars doesn't make a difference to a farmer.
But it goes from about sixty to maybe ninety to a hundred, almost double the amount of checks that you got to write out.
But those people in town, to me, they were, the obvious when they were in here complaining about having to be pulled in on this in the first place. And then if you don't distribute something back, they're going to come back and say, well, why did we get?
Bingo, I mean, like I said, the guy that got the five thousand, yes, he's had a big share of it out there and, and he has a means of recouping this, he's farming the ground. The people in town, they don't farm it. Yes, and people in town don't.
I, I agree.
I think fifty, we can get.
Go back to fifty, however, we got to do this, do we back it up with a motion, or?
I don't think you need a motion.
Just direct you, like, hey, you?
Not legally, but I should make a motion, so it's, is that fair?
Well, unfortunately, it's not on the agenda.
It's not agenda.
No, but we can, we can.
Let's just make it a direction. We can, we can direct her.
We can point Jana, because she was the one that kind of steered us away from the, she wanted the hundred dollar.
Right, but in all fairness, this was, and that's a good thing to do. It came up a week ago, it got broke down a little bit more specifically, correct? So, in that thought process over the past week, I think that goes along with moving it down to fifty, along with the thought process of the way this is done. Like, the direction would be fifty minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Board of Deacon, is that a direction?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Good with it.
All right, you got your marching orders, I guess. Okay, anything else for drainage? Okay, anything else for drainage?
Rick, are you, Gary made that, a comment about that tile that's half full, or, he said that he had visited with you before some other time about that. Um, I guess my question is, I, I'm wondering if that's been looked at, or?
The, the tile outlet for sub five into the-
No, 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 this is on the other one that he was talking about.
Oh, we've, we got it set up for Thursday at ten.
Thurs- this Thursday?
This Thursday, and we're gonna call him, Gary said he'd like to be there, and we'd like him to be there.
Yeah, awesome.
See if we have to relay any of it.
Awesome.
Yep, so, um, Gary, his tile coming from the west into the pond area, and he has concern that maybe the flow line is-
Well, once the pond gets full and we have rain like we could have, if it's backed up and it's got half of his, his pipe full, he's worried about more washing the road. That's what he said. Oh, wow.
When the pond gets full?
It's full.
It's full already, huh?
It's amazing, the rain.
Well, the rains have really put that sod, or brought the grass back, to keep that from washing, that really looks good.
Yeah, how many, how many acres is that, four thousand acres that feeds that pond? One twenty-five, it's a lot of acres.
You would think Dicky's would have like a little barbecue out there.
Yeah, he will, probably.
I can't remember the high, but-
Maybe it's too high.
That's really nice.
Oh, a lot of sections, yeah.
Probably twenty-five hundred.
There you go, between twenty-five hundred and three thousand.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
That grass coming in nice, and that'll keep it from washing in there.
Exactly, and once it gets up to the definite final level, if the wave action will hit the rip rap.
Hit the basketball on the one.
Yeah, yeah. Um, let's go get down to that page, DD four, pay approval pass for number one.
Yeah, that's great, that's B and B Construction, good outfit, they're, they're doing a good job, progressing real well. They're on, they're working on lateral two now, which is along the block down. Well, actually, this is along the east-west gravel road, a mile south. There is a problem with an outlet pipe there in the road right of way, I talked to Paul about it last week, he's gonna take a look at it, because it, right now, it has water coming under a pipe into the drainage ditch. Uh, but it is in the road right of way, so Paul's gonna see if he can take care of that, and, and we recommend approval, they're, they're doing a good job.
We got a pay estimate of twenty-four thousand, three hundred dollars, the job completion's at twenty-eight percent.
It's, it's a little bit behind in their billing, aren't they?
Yes, yes.
Twenty-four, three even?
On two now there.
And it's how much per, what?
Twenty-eight percent completion. But they're probably closer to seventy-five, the way it looks.
Yeah, what, what happens is we judge, we base that on the percent of the dollars that are done. The pipe items are way more expensive than the rest, so, um-
The work is further ahead than the twenty-eight percent that they've got billed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I make a motion.
Walling Ford?
Walling Ford.
Yep.
Make a motion to, for the approval of pay estimate number one to B and B for twenty-four, three.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on drainage?
Well, I guess it, I came up already about Gary's tile, and we do have that scheduled. Um, and Doug Marshall's gonna dig it up for us.
Okay.
He doesn't do a lot of farm tiling, the pattern tiling, so we thought we'd give him a shot at doing this. People that are doing the, the pattern tiling are getting so busy, that they, they couldn't even spare half the day for us, so, um, Doug's local, gonna work out good.
Nostrums out here, talked to them last week. Uh, that pipe that's in the road right of way, I think I visited you on the phone about it, the lateral that runs-
By the county farm?
By the county farm out here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Blacktop.
Yeah, visiting with Paul, I think what we're gonna have, nostrums find a location where their tile comes into the road ditch and hooks on, we're gonna expose it there and find out if it's plugged there or whether it gets plugged out. And if it's plugged in the shoulder, we're not gonna fix it again. Obviously, something's wrong.
Say that again?
It's a, basically what it is, it's a county main, comes across the road-
It does go underneath the road.
From north to south.
I know, I've looked at, I've looked at it.
And on the south side, there is a lateral that parallels the road, up the road to the west. And that is the lateral that the nostrums are tied to, right? You know, it's hooked to, it used to be hooked to an old intake in the ditch.
Yep.
That intake's no longer there. Paul thought it went further west to some other intakes even, that we don't know for sure. So they wanna have, have them locate it, and where it comes from their field into the ditch, so we don't have to start digging up the ditch all over the place. And, um, find out if it's plugged there, what, you know, do a little exploratory and find out what it is.
Could do the exploratory.
So we, or-
Uh, secondary roads.
As long as it's in the ditch, right?
The ditch, yeah, we'll dig it up in the ditch and find out.
What about the concern if it's, uh, works on going underneath the road?
Well, this one doesn't go, it parallels the road, but if-
It parallels the road on the south side, doesn't it?
Yeah, but if it's like this and it's always filling full of sand and whatever, uh, we're not gonna try to fix it, 'cause it's gonna be an ongoing problem. We'll have to look at some sort of negotiation to put it out in the field. The issue is, I had a conversation with, um, Phil May, and they're not so, like, you know, wanting to do that, but it is a county main that they'd be going to, so, we're just gonna first find out what the problem is, and then negotiate a cure. And if, if it is plugged, we'll have some liability as a county to, you know, redo the outlet for them.
So are we going to try to do that yet this fall?
Yeah.
I hope.
If we can get, get it located, so.
'Cause I know that, that corner south, or excuse me, the northeast corner that he went out and they took the corn off it.
Yeah, I was out there the day of their combine and talked to him, so.
So only if it's in the-
Right away.
Yeah, we're trying to find, find the problem.
Okay, but if it becomes in their field, it's-
Yeah, if it's out in their field, we're still not gonna fix, we're gonna recommend that they don't tie to that and go somewhere else, if that's the issue, but we, first off, we gotta find out what-
We gotta find it-
Find out what the problem is.
So we're nowhere we're shooting.
You know, and he says this, they say that, you don't know, until you open it up and look.
But you have talked to Dutch?
I talked to him, I haven't told him this yet, but I will call him today.
I'll check at the elevator, 'cause they've been coming in down here.
Okay. Okay, what all happened on drainage?
Peterson Construction is back on three dash forty-seven cleanout. Uh, they started that and did a lot of the work on it already, but the, the completion date is gonna be coming up here, so, um, they're back in and gonna finish that up. Four, we talked about where they are, um, three, all the dirt work is done, uh, they're just working on pipe outlets. And they, they should be there today working.
How about out west?
Uh, I went by there this morning, Holland's in there working this morning, it's kinda muddy, but, uh, they're in there. They hit a small sand pocket last week and got through that, so, that should be going better.
Are they getting enough pipe on hand to keep?
They're just, yeah, they're not way ahead of them, but, yeah, they, they made arrangements, they had enough to be okay. Um, they're short of a half mile, or a few hundred feet. Couple days, they may get up to the half mile line, that'll get them on Louise Piper's ground. And then, yeah, should be some shallow we're digging from there on.
Oh, I was gonna mention John Opai, I'm on number three out here with that private crossing. I visited with him yesterday, and, uh, he wanted to know what his deadline was to get that fixed. I told him the sooner the better, because it basically is like a dam right now. Uh, so hopefully he'll be coming up to talk to Trish to get your number.
Have they pulled the corn or beans, I assume?
I'm thinking the corn's out, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
I guess we should probably check to just make sure that his crop is off and the field work is done, so that if it does get pulled, we aren't holding him up to do the field work.
He wanted to know the process he has to go through to, you know, whether he hires somebody or we hire somebody, or what, and-
Well, the protocol that, uh, it does kind of consider an obstruction, that in the course of cleaning the ditch, the contractor removes it.
Yeah, that's the way it usually happens.
That's a cost back, just like the ditch cleanup, it's their responsibility to put it back in.
Yeah, the, the tearing it out will go to the drainage district.
Bingo.
Uh, replacing it goes to the landowner.
Yep.
Did, have you heard anything back from Tim and Jim, Rasterson, or?
No, have not, have not, actually, I'll follow up on both those.
The other, yeah, you mentioned how they're doing on the drainage lock closure, good? I spoke with Brian Lunning personally, not any concern on that, like Rick said, that's going real well. Get that straight from the contractor, they're doing good. Speaking of in that area, though, the other project, drainage lock closure, are you guys still on track with your exploratory, if you will?
I need to call Minsky and see if he has anybody to do the drilling, because what we talked about several weeks ago was somebody drilling that quarter section to try and find a route that would work and minimize the limestone digging, so.
Right, so just, uh, keep everybody coordinated in that, and keep it moving forward. Yeah, exploratory or whatever, I think exploratory's the right word right now.
Yes, yes.
But, uh, get, get that accomplished. Uh, the other thing I'll bring up, uh, DD thirty-three, landowner concern of, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's just completed this year, you know, it didn't rain until August, and then it's rained quite a bit. So, uh, it looks odd out here, so I did, uh, Holland Contracting again did that project, so, I looked at it, Dave and I looked at it, as a matter of fact. So, then I even took Brian Lunning out there, and it's fine, there's no problem as far as, you know, any big sucking hole or something, which we didn't expect. It's just a huge tile project, yes, it's a little higher, what you want above where all this huge tile is laid. It just needs, it just needs a little time to do its thing naturally, and, yep. So we took a look at it, I talked to the landowner, uh, I said, let's get through this winter, and, you know, let's see what it looks like. Holland says if there's any issue, they have no problem fixing it, but he said that we will make it by far worse instead of any better, trying to do anything this fall, 'cause it hasn't had a chance to go through a freeze storm, or, so.
Much rain till recently.
That, and, and just nature, I mean, you know, it was a huge project, a big digging, and that's just, I mean, Dave and I looked at it, and basically just what it amounts to, it just needs to go through a cycle. It just needs settled out and dirt level is good. And, and maybe not even the dirt level, 'cause it's, you know, if it's, it may, technically, probably will settle itself over the tile.
Sometimes the farming operation is enough to take care of it, but it's a little too much.
And you've seen huge projects over the, contractors will say, a, a year is good, two to five is better. I mean, it takes-
To heal itself.
Yeah, because if they try to do something mechanically, more often than not, they make it worse instead of better, if, if there's not a particular problem, so. There's no, you know, that was just something we looked at, and, but like I said, right, Rick has mentioned several times, Holland is a phenomenally good contracting company to work with, and they, he was, he said, we're not too far away, he says, if we looked at it, he said, let's, let's get through the winter, relay that to that landowner, so everybody's on the same page, and that's what we're doing.
Good.
DD thirty-three, we're looking at branch C for improvements, for closing the one ag well, that's Harland Schultz and-
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, I'm sorry, yeah, thirty-five.
Cool.
Um, listen, we've got most of the field work, there's one stretch that has not been dug up yet to find the tile. Dial was gonna see if, if he could get permission to do that, or, or have us get permission for him to come in there. Dial actually did the exploratory for us on the rest of the project, which is great, because between his ground and Harland's ground, it covers a lot of the route, so, we're hoping to have a bid letting on that this winter, January, February.
If we do that flying, we should fly the bottom side down by fairway and up along towards the cemetery, 'cause I think, talking obstructions, there's potential from this highway up to the-
We have that.
We do?
We were just busy enough last week, we didn't bother to try and pull it up, but-
I don't know if you can even see down in there, the timber's so thick in there.
I know, yeah.
But all that water's coming this way.
Yeah, be good to see what we've got, to see if anything more needs to be done. So, I don't know, if it'd work to stick around a little when you're done and pull that up, would that work, do you think, to pull up that drilling footage for, okay?
I could do it.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else? Jan, I'm motioning to go out of drainage.
I'll move.
Second?
For second, all in favor?
Aye.
For out of drainage back in, do you, anybody need a little reset?
Yeah, we have a real short reset.
A big short reset, when Piggy comes back in.
Yeah, on this eleven seven five.
Don't worry, anything, as far as the three minutes.
Good.
Good.